Sure. It is Tuesday, March 29th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the April Board Meeting to order because we've had to move the meeting date to accommodate next week's election. And I have a short invocation. Like Father, we ask you for wisdom and discernment for this board in the exercising of our duties, and also for all who are and will vote in our upcoming elections. May we elect people with good moral fiber and character to serve the public. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matt?
Here.
Darren?
Here.
Allison?
Here.
Dunin?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Weckins?
Here.
Trustee Zeig?
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of March 1, 2022, and special board meeting on March 8, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Discussion, additions, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Comments from the floor? It's an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. And I don't see anyone here that doesn't, isn't on the agenda, so we'll move on to four. Item amended class, PRMB slash PRMB liquor license for extended premises. Malloo Inn Spring Motorcycle Run on April 9th, approved requested.
Stan, I move that the class PRMB, class PRMB retail license for sale for the fermentable beverage and intoxicating liquors for Malloo Inn be temporarily amended for an event taking place April 9th, 2022 with the following conditions. Number one, sale of alcohol to be extended to the parking lot area of Malloo Inn. Number two, possession of open containers of alcohol outside the establishment shall remain within the Malloo Inn parking lot and blocked off street area for event. Wisconsin Street North from Third Street North to Sixth Street North. Use of outside area with specific permissions of village board for each particular date and event, April 9th, 2022. Event to be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Number four, three North Hudson Police Officers and three St. Croix County deputies to be on duty during the hours of the event at the owner's expense and to be billed by the owner of the village, and to be billed to the owner of, by the village, excuse me. And number five, owner to be, provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Number six, Wisconsin Street North from Sixth Street North to Third Street North to be closed through traffic from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM with an open courier for emergency vehicles maintained. Surrounding neighbors to be notified in advance by the village. Actual times of the detail route are at the discretion of the commanding North Hudson Police Department Officer on scene. And number seven, payment for the village services must be paid within 30 days of the event. And finally, number eight, alternate date for the event to be Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, if conditions do not allow for the event to take place on the Saturday, April 9th, 2022.
Thank you. Two, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Chief, if both days get rained out, do they owe nothing? Do they still have to pay for your kind of time?
They would have to pay for the police protection. I don't know if there's any, anything else that comes from that.
If we did it, we had to mail letters out to quite a number of residents, so they probably just have to pay the mailing fee for that.
And also their, their, their rain date kind of falls in between when we're going to start the project, I think, on.
That's the last one, right?
I had a discussion with the contractor yesterday at the pre-con meeting, and he said that they won't have any, any of their equipment in that location as of yet because there's not a lot of storage. So until they close the street, they don't expect to have equipment, so should be okay if it, if we have to go to the 23rd.
Yeah, no, I just, it was a discussion that Melissa and I had talked about and stuff because we weren't sure they were from anywhere from, they were going to start the 4th and then the 11th and move back. And I know how construction works and stuff, so yeah.
You can just use my yard if you need it.
Just so that we get it done, so we get paid. That's the important part, because it's part of the grant and we have to have it done by July sometime, so. Okay, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the amended extended premise for Malloo Inn, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item five, application for conveyance of land filed by Jared and Joan Krenz, Joanne Krenz, sorry, and approval requested.
Stan, move to approve the application for conveyance of land between the adjoining properties of Jared and Joanne Krenz at 203 Station Circle North and Ann and Darren Finch at 208 Station Circle North.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. Is there any discussion?
So since we don't have the survey map that's mentioned in here.
Well, it should be in there.
Or do we?
Scroll, 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 scroll.
Yep.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask you. So what are they putting together?
This is my IT buddy.
Okay. I didn't scroll down.
Happens to us all sometimes. So basically what these are, conveyance of land, it's two adjacent properties. They have to be adjacent. And sometimes homeowners come to an agreement where they want to sell part of their land and put it with the adjacent parcel. So that's what these are. As long as they meet, they're reviewed by Brian Wirt and Kevin to make sure they still meet the minimum lot size requirements. And if they see any issues, and that's why they don't need to go through planning commission, they just need final approval by the board. So that's the case in this, if you have any questions for Jared.
So is it like a quick claim thing? I mean, are they selling a chunk?
What it is, this is leftover land that Mrs. Summers owned that I purchased years ago, and so.
Sorry, sir. Yeah, yeah, just, just so the people watching, our Six fans need to see.
Yeah, exactly. This is just a little piece, a sliver of land that, that was left over that Mrs. Summers had, and I purchased from her years ago. And this is just the process of cleaning it up. So one hunk is next to the Finch's property, one hunk is next to my property, and we're just cleaning it up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the application for conveyance, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Jared, thank you. And if you, if you don't have nothing better to do, you're welcome to stay. I know, I'd find a place if you wanted to.
I'd have to run.
A little springy this stuff.
Yeah.
Alrighty, item six, new business from the board or staff and the president's comments. And I haven't heard much about it, but there is a, I want to have a reminder with the nicer weather and stuff that we are going to be having our upcoming property reevaluations going on this year. The state requires it because our assessed values have to be within a certain percent of the market value, so, and I would hope everyone will be civil with their assessor. I mean, he's just trying to do a job that he's required to do, and, and we are hopefully going to get through this and it doesn't cause a lot of issues, but it's, you know, and it helps to be, so they can see what's going on, so we can have a fair tax assessment. And then the second thing I have is, there's not a lot going on in April, but I really hope that everyone has a blessed and safe Passover and Easter and a joyous resurrection day. Melissa?
So I wanted to remind everybody, the spring election is on Tuesday, April 5th. The last day to request an absentee ballot by mail is this Thursday, March 31st. And the last day to in-person absentee vote is this Friday, April 1st, and we are open Thursday and Friday this week until 5:00 PM. And then also the annual reorg meeting will be on Tuesday, April 19th at 5:00. And then also I just want to say thank you to Trustee Matt for all of his years of service. This is his last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that this is your last meeting, Phil. I mean, you gotta write me more notes.
I just.
No, it has been a pleasure having you on the board, absolutely, and you will be missed. And I'm sure you'll come help somebody other municipality out with your commitment to public service, so thank you very much again.
It's been an honor to serve the village and a pleasure to serve with all of you, so.
Thank you, Phil.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those two are.
One question? Yeah.
5:00.
So right in front of the public works meeting?
Yes.
April 19th.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to send out an invite for that?
I will.
Alrighty then, next is plan, commission, recommendations, chair update. Paul, you guys didn't have a meeting or?
Not this month.
Nothing going on here?
We're working on maybe a preliminary plat.
Or a zappa.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only thing that's active right now.
Okay, good. Item eight, personnel and finance committee recommendations, claims approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the December 2021 nonreclaims, nonrecurring claims of $1,344.41 and the March 2022 nonrecurring claims of $107,504?
Thank you. Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Melissa, why are we paying December 2021 stuff right now?
Because we're just receiving the bills this year, but technically it's for invoices from December. So we just got them this year for things that were December, so we have to label them that way.
Thank you.
So they get to the right year.
And then what big expense do we have in March?
There is the first half of the library agreement is on there, and then the Highway 35, Wisconsin Street, the bills continue to come in for that. We have not received the final bills yet. And then also the delinquent utilities that we collect on behalf of the city of Hudson.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Hearing none, Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. And yes.
Thank you. Item B is change of domain name for village website and staff, approval requested.
Stan, I move to authorize the village administrator to work with the village IT provider to begin the process of changing the domain name for all village staff and trustees' email and the village website to northhudsonwisconsin.gov, northhudsonwi.gov.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Melissa, you want to give a little quick background or?
Yes, so this was, I was made aware of this last fall at one of my clerks' conferences. Basically, this is coming down from the federal level to do business with other government entities are going to start requiring that those municipalities have a .gov domain name. And the first one is going to be required from Wisconsin Election Commission is requiring to do email communication with local municipalities and clerks that we upgrade that to .gov. And I know we ran into it, I believe the chief has as well, doing business with maybe even our FEMA grants, things like that, they're going to require a .gov domain name. And WEC is providing a $600 grant to help pay for this, which will cover almost all of it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of changing the domain name to a .gov, signal by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C, use of ARPA funds for Wisconsin Street North project, approval requested.
Stan, I move to approve the use of ARPA funds for the water sewer portion of the Wisconsin Street North project in the amount not to exceed $215,000.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion, this is something we have talked about in previous board meetings, and sewer and water is one of the biggest things for the ARPA money, and to help diffuse our costs on that, I think it's a great use of this money, so it's nice to have those out there.
We had a list of possible options for the ARPA funds that was fairly extensive that we haven't really discussed or prioritized that we had received previous, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't have some sort of a discussion about how to prioritize the spending of the funds before we dedicate them to a particular purpose.
I, I, I guess, I mean, the ARPA money is, can be used for a lot of different things. This is one of the top, the original purposes was to help diffuse costs of sewer and water. I don't know how this doesn't benefit the village as far as property taxes and everything else. I mean, there's, the ARPA money is, it's not discretionary money, it's, it should be for projects that we absolutely need help with, and, you know, I mean.
I believe there's certain requirements you have to meet, Mary, and I think this did do that. I know there was other things on the, the list that we had, but there's still enough time and still enough money that we could sit down and definitely have that discussion. I certainly feel that way, Mary.
Right.
It's a good point.
I mean, it definitely fits the criteria, so that isn't, that isn't the question at all. I think the question is how to prioritize the funds, they're one-time funds, and how to prioritize them when there's things that we can actually pay for through other means. And there's a whole list of things. We had the HVAC system for the village hall, the smart TV, laptop, control panel and dialers for the, for the sanitary sewer, business support for lost revenue. I know I'm reading other communities are doing things to support the public health of the citizens and the mental health of the citizens by looking at outdoor spaces. There's emergency community, emergency communications software. I mean, there's just a whole lot of things that we could consider for these funds. I hate to dedicate them to something again without first prioritizing all of the other options.
Sorry, go back to Melissa, your question. So the timing, we got still enough time, right, a lot of this?
Right, and the thing with the Wisconsin Street project is that was something that was, the board had always kind of discussed earmarking the ARPA to pay for water and sewer. So when we took the bond out for that 35 project and for Wisconsin Street, we didn't include the water and sewer portion in the bond with the point of using this. So that's the one, hang up with that. We purposely didn't do the bond, and Brian Riley spoke to the board about that the bond wasn't going to include the water sewer part of that, so.
And he did reference the ARPA in that, in the journal.
He did, yep.
And when was that?
But going back to her.
That was when Brian Riley was doing the bond.
Yeah, when he produced.
Doing, talking about the bond, when we went out for the bond, for the 35 project. So the bond included the 35 project plus the, only the street portion of Wisconsin Street with the intention that we were going to use ARPA for the water sewer portion. And it has come down a little bit, originally was thought to be about 250. We got the updated bid numbers and came in about 230, which is good news. And then about 17,500 will be assessed back to the property owners. So you're looking at roughly 212,500. I did the 215 just to leave some room for that. So it's only issue with the, with this project is the bond didn't include it with the intention of using these.
And if we didn't have this in there, the bond would have been exceptionally high.
Well, it would have been high, yes. I mean, that was always, you know, the intention, because there was such a limited use in the beginning when ARPA came out, there was such a limited use of it.
Exactly.
It has opened up a little bit, but, yeah, that was why that intention was here for this part of it. And yes, I know Patrick's been doing some work getting updated quotes on like the HVAC and the auto de, or control panel and things like that, so that still will leave between this and if it's approved for the other project as well, it still will leave about 150,000. That definitely can be prioritized for the remainder of the items, and, and there is time, but unfortunately with the Wisconsin Street project starting in April.
I have a question, Melissa.
Yes.
So I might not be understanding this correctly, but I was going to say something to the effect of, you know, I'm concerned too that if we have other ways to fund our regular things such as roadwork, which of course is very important and a big expense, that if we have other ways to fund those, it makes sense to me that we, as much as possible, look at these one-time funds for possible opportunities, improvements, things that we normally can't afford. But am I hearing you correctly saying that because we did not go to bond?
We did include that part of the bond.
That is no longer an option? Is that correct? Thank you.
We can't amend, we can't have that bond now include this.
And just for our listeners, can we make sure everyone knows when was that decision made?
Oh, gosh, I mean, the bond was all last year, 2021, is right?
At least, I mean, we've had that, we've had the grant.
July, in July?
Yeah, we knew that, we knew that we needed to spend the money that we have been granted for the Wisconsin Street project, and the finance guys came in here and we discussed, since we knew that ARPA could at that point be used for the water sewer portion of the Wisconsin Street, the board discussed this, and we said, out of that ARPA fund then, since that's an acceptable use at this point in time, we won't take that money and add it to the bond. It didn't make sense at the time since we were going to have ARPA, and it seemed at the time that ARPA was pretty restricted on what could, what it could be used for. So we really made that decision back in 2021 to use ARPA for this particular project as a board.
And it was recommended by them, Amy, our.
Okay.
Great, I just.
Yeah, I mean, at that time too, we had, I mean, such little idea of what we could use this for. Every time we would ask her, you'd be like, well, maybe.
Well, it changes. It's the final, final rule, and it's opened up a little more, but that was, you know, recently, which will allow for some of these other options to be considered with the rest, the remainder of the ARPA funds, you know? And it couldn't be used for a road part of a project before. That's why we took the bond for the street portion of the Wisconsin Street, because you couldn't use ARPA funds for that before. Now you can, so it's, it's opened up a little bit, a little bit more, but you still have to, you know, explain yourself with this money, so.
Well, the detail, then finally, it's a little bit off, the general item here, but the detail what she's talking about, the list, how do we even go about bringing that back? Do we go through a subcommittee first and bring it up through that, or we come through?
Well, I think that, there's not really a subcommittee, the board as a whole, I think, should certainly discuss them. And I know like Patrick, like I said, has been working on quotes, so the board has all the quotes and the list of items and they, you know, and if there's other, you know, I've always said, if there's other ideas, let me know, and I can go to our auditor and see if it's acceptable use on it. But, you know, feel free to email me and I can ask so that we get a complete list for the board to consider and prioritize.
What's the date on this last fun part, or the stuff we have left over?
Oh, you mean to use it by?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's 2024.
Yeah, it's four, three, four years, I know that.
So you really, that's what they stress, you know, you don't have to rush to do it. Unfortunately, we have with these two projects coming is.
We did.
Why this is kind of on the forefront, but.
At the time, it was the right idea.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also that the government, the powers that be that are gifting us with this wonderful free money is, you know, these are undeniable, usable without them challenging us for.
Right, yeah, you do still want, they don't, yeah, and I've heard other municipalities state, well, it's just kind of a free-for-all now, but you still do have to do the reporting and have to.
Exactly.
Explain it somewhat.
They have opened it up a lot.
They did open it up a lot, yes, and that was kind of the new.
Especially if you're under 10 million.
It is maybe off subject from what we're actually trying to discuss in the motion, but I would like to strongly recommend that what we do then before making any additional decisions beyond what we do tonight is that we have a planning session or brainstorming then planning session, just so that we make sure that we are really looking as a group at different options and having a full discussion.
That'd be fine.
Going forward, yep.
Up to you.
Sounds good. Great, send.
I mean, how many times have you said to, to this group itself, if you have something, kind of bring it up to you and you'll see where it fits?
Yeah, and I'll see if it qualifies and, yeah, which now, like we said, it's, those rules have changed a little bit, but, as I said, the planning for Wisconsin Street started so far back, and then with the ARPA funds that is, that kind of started way before, and maybe it started before you guys even were on the board is, you know, the discussion on that. But at the time, like we said, it was so restricted, when we were planning for this and when we took the bond out, it was pretty much water sewer, you know? So that's why we did it that way with the bond.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, Tim?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item D, use of ARPA funds for St. Croix Street North project approval requested.
Stan, I move to approve the use of ARPA funds for, for the St. Croix Street North mill and overlay road project in the amount not to exceed 33,500.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk, is there a discussion on this?
Well, I think we're not obligated to use ARPA for this fund, for this project, is that correct?
Right, the only other option would be use of available funds, because we're not going to take a loan for 30.
But we have several other things coming up that, as far as the streets, we're getting the bid for Monroe, or we got the bid for Monroe.
This is an LRIP project?
But we're, but there's, yes, and there's 485,000 that the village is going to be responsible for with that.
Okay, so this is an LRIP project that we have to spend again by X date?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure what that date is?
That's just the application.
Oh, okay.
That's not for sure thing then.
Are we using grant money for this?
If we get it.
If you get it.
If we get it.
This is just the application process.
Okay.
So what you're saying is the timing won't work for, for this, for combining these multiple projects?
The St. Croix Street, the money has to be spent by this year.
This year, so you can do your research.
Yeah, so this one's a, so if the board chooses not to use ARPA, there'd be use of available funds as the other option.
So the benefit to doing that would be keeping the options open for the ARPA funds, and the drawback would be reducing the available funds by that same amount.
Correct, and the timing?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just think it's really unfortunate we haven't had a discussion about this ARPA funding previously to, to being, obligating it now and reducing our options. So I really hope that we do have a discussion on a future agenda to talk about what our options are and try and prioritize them and potentially, you know, make sure that when that goes out in the minutes that people are aware that there's potential here to, to make some decisions, to do some things that we can't normally do.
And I have one other question then, Melissa, so let's say we did not choose to use the ARPA funds. We have that amount of money available?
You can, it'll drop the, you know, the balance down, definitely.
And how in your opinion is significant is that?
Um, I figured it out.
How much is in available funds, you mean?
How much is in it?
So as projected, the balance would be about 38%. And we try and stay, our policy is to be 20 to 25%, but that's low.
Okay.
I guess my only thing is.
We don't go down to 20%, so.
The thing I would say is, then we're projecting that, I mean, this funds could be used for this project to help us out, so if we don't do it for this fund, then we're going to guess the next fund's more important, and we don't know what the next fund is. So for me, it's like, this is something we could use for this funds. I totally agree with you that we definitely need to set up with the rest of the funds we need, we could spend it in different ways, but this is something right in front of us that we could use for this.
And we have in the unassigned funds, do you know approximately, Melissa, how much is in that fund right now?
Well, it's the 38%, it would drop it down to.
Isn't there more like, over 800,000 in that account?
No, you got to take, there's, there's, sorry, I just had it, I lost it. We have to take out this year's expenses that are already planned from the budget. There is the police department squad, protective equipment, office equipment, the new truck, public works equipment, the new copier, public works office equipment, so that dropped it down to about 762. And then if we do the St. Croix Street project, it'd drop it down to 731, but that amount's not as important as the percentage. I mean, you got to really look at the percentage, because you could say you have a lot in there, but it's the, it's what it's based off of the general fund expenditures. So if you took that out, it would be, drop it to 38%.
Of general fund expenditures?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I didn't quite understand that last time we were talking about 3%.
Yeah, sorry, yep.
No, that's my lack of knowledge.
Yep, of the 2022 general fund expenditures.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mary? Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine, Public Works Committee recommendations, Chair update, Brian, she's all yours.
Um, I have nothing except agreeing with Stan, make sure you get out and vote on the fifth.
Item B is spray patching of village streets, approval requested.
Stan, I recommend having St. Croix County spray patch village streets, also have Public Works Department spray, a rent spray, spray patch machine from RCM with time slash staff permitting. These expenses not to exceed 20,000 and come from contracted streets, maintenance and spray patch account.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk, discussion?
I think we were going to do that as an or, wasn't it? The county or you? County or the village?
Yeah.
It's not, doesn't read or, but it's, yeah. That's fine, no.
Is there any chance that both of you could do it? Like you started and have to finish it because you can't?
No, so, let me grab this.
You've got two guys.
I know, I'm kidding.
Or it's him and one other person.
The idea is, first of all, he's not spending the whole amount with the contractor and he always leaves a little buffer and if he has time, he could rent that equipment and go out and do a little bit more.
So they possibly have them both happen, but it's just a matter of time.
It's an and/or, I guess.
So should we move to amend that to the or?
We certainly can.
I'll move to amend that to the village renting the equipment or the county doing it to not exceed the previously stated limit.
Second. So we have to, sorry, do we have to take the first one back to do the second?
No, we need, no.
Okay, perfect, second.
Any further discussion?
No, but thank you for that clarification because I was uncertain as well when I read it. So I appreciate someone asking.
Any other discussion or further discussion? Hearing none, Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. C is seal coating, village streets, approval requested.
Stan, I recommend Allied Blacktop Co. to seal coat the village streets with costs not to exceed 42,000 and money to be used from contracted street maintenance seal coating account.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, Mary?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Item D, street sweeping contract approval requested.
Recommend to have Mike McPhillips, Inc. sweep streets of village at rate of 115 per hour with money to come from contracted street sweeping account.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil, is there a discussion? Hearing none, sounds like everybody read their board packet and there's not a lot of options and as we discussed in finance, they have done an outstanding job for, I think as long as I've been in service of the village, so, and, you know, like I said, not a lot of options, so, Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, public safety, Tim, do you guys got anything?
Stan, we did meet, yes, and I'd like to carry forward a motion. I move to approve the application for fire paraphernalia license, temporary use permit for Karen Whaley and I'm going to add doing business as Excellent One Fireworks with the following inclusions, no smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under the age of 18 in operation not to exceed 180 days per calendar year.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the fireworks paraphernalia license application, sign by, by saying aye.
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 Opposed, thank you.
That's all, Stan.
Thank you, Tim. Public Welfare Committee?
Kirk? We did not meet.
Okay, how about Park Board?
We did meet. Patrick will bring a little, the Park Board plan, kind of go through it quick. Anything you want to update, but before that, I kind of want to remote, remind everyone to vote. And then our next board meeting is off a little bit because we're before it for the next month, but we are approve, hopefully approving the movie and the park equipment. The pickleball at Glen Oaks, we're really hoping to get it put together and finish it so we could start pouring it. The reason for the delay of a lot of this is Patrick is so helpful, but he only has one person, so he keeps wanting to try to do everything, but at some point we can't. Frisbee golf, we're going to look at putting that down there and then the, the grant from Ferry's Landing, we're going to have your company come in and kind of write it for us, so. Browns Beach, sorry, Browns Beach, so. That was this update that we're going to go through next week if it gets approved. And then next we have number B. On the outdoor slash park planning, approval requested.
Okay. And.
I mean, since everyone's reading their planners, they kind of, they've seen what we've taken out of it and added.
And there, you know, it's quite a lengthy plan, but is there, is that a motion to approve the plan as you?
Stan, I motion to approve the, oh, wait, it's on the wrong page. Sorry, give me one sec. Um, the outdoor reaction and planning, park planning for 2022 slash 2027. Reconsideration. Recreation.
Outdoor recreation, yeah, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil, uh, discussion?
I have a couple of questions on the, the properties that were removed. The parks on the table one, existing park and recreational facilities. The Malaloo and Seventh and Riverside Landing are deleted in the update?
I just kind of took those off there because they're, I mean, they are parks, but I.
Patrick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, your voice carries wealth as most of ours do, but just so the public could.
I just, I took those off there, I know they are parks. The reason why I removed them is there's really nothing we can do with them. As, as far as I understand and I've been led to understand since I've been here is that they're, they're small and not a whole lot, no, not a whole lot can be done with them, so we just mow them and try to keep them nice so that people can at least walk on them and sit in the grass and enjoy the view.
There's no parking or anything like that around them in order to build, to do anything like that?
Um, my concern, as long as you're up there, Patrick, which I would like to hear about is.
I can't hear you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. My concern or awareness that I need explanation on is I have been attending a number of park boards in recent months, as most of you know, as we were talking about entering into conversation about the acquisition of the Tresle Beach property and I see here that at the very time when we just approved moving forward to discuss it, that is crossed off, even though it was on the plan from 2014 to 2019, but was not addressed for various reasons, which I understand. Uh, I don't understand why it would be crossed out right at a time when we've made a decision as a board to enter into conversation and create a work group with the city of Hudson and the county to explore that very option. It seems that it should be on there more than ever.
Sure, and I, and that's why it's, that's why it's out here, it's for discussion, so. If that's, if you feel that that needs to be added in there, that's fine.
Well, we could discuss it.
Even if it's not in there, it doesn't make it not a thing. This, this whole packet, we've been kind of pushing through because of how much we have to get it going through the grant. Because we have to have this filed to apply for the grant, that's kind of why it's been pushed through that, so even that item that is part of there doesn't mean that it's not part of our pork, park pool, but it was just for this. We were trying to just get this through.
Well, it's in the long range priorities section, three to five years, and personally, I do not feel comfortable with that being removed at this time to look into trail connection for biking and pedestrian, to tie into regional trails. I, I think it's very important that right now we, we keep that option on our long term priorities and/or potential plans, even though we have nothing concrete in the works at this time.
So we could, we could still add that and reamend it and then put it through and then we'll still be fine with the, perfect.
Yeah, the original language on page 13 for number 13, I would request that the deletion be removed and the original language, go back there. I still had a question though on the, so that, that Malaloo property, the 2.47 acres, is that, is that something that we still have as a village?
Yes.
Because that's like not a small space, I'm just, so I'm, I am, I'm not, I'm just not, I'm trying to understand the, why it's not on there, so you're saying that that, even though it's a larger space?
That's what we don't have access to is what I believe.
There's no access, okay.
It's the area down by the Malaloo, or the, the lake that we don't.
Oh.
There's really no access to it. But it's been constituted a park.
So it, to be a coherent plan with the vote that we took earlier this month with the trails and the things that we just talked about as far as keeping the coordination on there, then I would request that we add that back in, that 2.47 acres on Malaloo, on page 10.
And is that on the map? Because I'm struggling right now to know exactly where that is.
It should be on our parks map, I can double check that tomorrow and send it to you.
Thank you, I hate to be adding more work, I know you're busy, but I just, maybe I'm just not looking at this correctly.
And it may not be, I'm not sure.
I think it's identified as the potential park location with the Green Hatch.
Which one?
Right there.
I thought that was private land that had come up for sale previously.
Yeah, that's not that, Mary, I don't believe.
Okay.
It looks like it's off of Deer Run.
Yep.
Park. Yeah, I don't, do we have access to?
Oh, so then that's, then I was confused, then that would be the.
Oh, Malaloo Park, I thought we were talking about Lake Malaloo.
No, 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 no.
I see it now.
Okay.
The, yep, that goes down.
And follows behind all those properties, back over to Helen.
And goes down to, yep, so I was confused on that one.
I was excited, I thought we had a couple acres on the lake.
The ones that I took out were stuff that we didn't have access to or really, nothing that we could do with them, so.
So do we have access to that Malaloo, that Malaloo Park?
Yes and no, I guess, I mean, there's really nothing, yeah, it's very skinny and basically a walking trail.
And the majority of it goes between private property owners and the backside.
Oh, that's that back stretch.
Because it goes all the way through.
Yep.
Are we talking about that area that literally looks like a path connecting the two right now? I'm just trying to make sure I know what people are talking about.
You see it, Amy, off to the right side.
Yeah, I see Malaloo Park, I see Deer Run and then that long strip, I assume that's what we're talking about right now.
That was, I was told that way back, somebody thought that would eventually be a trail. Because it's between, you know, property owners, it's just sitting there doing nothing at this point. Do we mow that even? Okay.
And I don't know what the topography is on the far east side of that, I don't know if it's not kind of bluffish.
Hudson side?
No, 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 he's talking about the area with that, that park is.
Yeah, because it's at the end of Michelson Street North and then there would be a little path and I don't, there's, it's a pretty good hill there, so I don't know what that.
And there's a good amount of runoff there too, if you walk through it, so I'm always.
Keen little thing right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah. So I'm always nervous of doing anything there.
Do you have access from Deer Run Park to this park, looks like?
I mean, if you follow properly and step.
Land is there, whether or not there's trees or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That particular item would have to be with that.
Access, but it's pretty limited.
Well, I understand, it's cute, I'm telling you, you have two developments sitting there, it's wrong, that's absurd.
Yeah.
So should we add it back in just because it is property? I mean, it's.
Yeah, I certainly, I certainly can.
Well, whatever the board decides.
Actually, I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
I think it's good if we keep track of, keep, I don't know where else we keep track of it.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would keep track of it on our parks map, I guess, if it's not in our, I just, I, I guess I figured this was our plan, so if it wasn't really in our plan to approve it or we couldn't improve it, then.
Keeping it on is perfectly fine, this is our three to five year plan.
Sure.
I, I guess a miracle would happen for all of our other things to go through that this became part of it, but it absolutely has no, I mean, it doesn't hurt to keep it on, you don't lose anything. It's just a suggestion of what we're thinking about trying to do, so.
And the plan is guidelines, it's not anything that we say, yes, we're absolutely doing, it's something that we need to have in place if we want to try to file for grants and do different things because certain agencies above us require that kind of thing. It's doesn't, if it's on the list or not on the list, doesn't it, it doesn't mean that it's not something that the village will address if we have issues to address there, it's a.
I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's such an understatement, I think, yeah, we keep it on there, it's fine, but, you know, we're still adjusting and adding things, there's hundreds, hundreds of things that we've added that weren't on it, but there's no problem, we can keep it there.
Well, the, the keeping it there is really important when we are, when you're talking about grants, because that's what they're going to look for is see if you've got it in your plan, so that is really important. It's great that you're open to doing that.
The plan is 22 pages, I think, it kind of says that we've got a plan.
My other question, as long as we're hashing all this out, is, is there a particular reason why we're taking off those access points, which, if I'm reading this correctly, down on Lake Malaloo and Riverside Drive at if I'm reading it right, am I Seventh and Riverside and then?
What page you on, Amy?
I'm looking at this chart on page 10.
For the benches.
Yep, again, again, that's the, the one down at the end here, that there's no parking, that we, there's no way we could have access to that without it becoming a public safety issue. And then the other one that's down on Riverside, that's actually zone conservancy, so we should not touch or do anything with that.
Our, our idea too is a lot of this stuff that just because it is a park, we have to think of a lot of bigger things, like he's talking about, like, okay, let's say we try to do that and are we hurting ourselves with trying to take everything we have and make it something? So those two examples are us being nervous that if we have someone open up or try to do that, are we causing more harm?
Because there's not public access from those two points.
No, there's not, and.
So if we deem it a park, now someone walks through someone's yard saying, we're trying to get here, so that's why we're always nervous of a lot of these certain spots. I mean, we have, we have a lot of parks, I mean, as we can tell, so.
So in this table, do we have all of our parks listed? Because I, I was told by the county we have 85 acres of parkland, not 53.
Um, no, we don't.
So we don't have them all in here?
Not all of them have names.
Okay, thanks.
I think there's a couple unnamed parks in there, but.
We have a lot of it.
Everything is in there, I guess.
Chart, though.
I mean, do you remember Mary found the, the land between Summers Landing Park and Ferry's Landing Park for us, so that was something that we kind of got added, but, I mean.
Well, this is good, Patrick, I, you know, obviously we're looking at this and we're taking.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good, I mean, I appreciate, you know.
I agree, it's nice to be able to sit and have a discussion about something as a whole group.
Yeah, this is good.
Hey, I might have missed this, but did you say where you were going to maybe put the frisbee golf course?
Uh, yes, we're going to try to do Woodcrest Park, you can kind of, there's, they have the hill or the woods that we come up, we're only going to try to do like three, so it's not going to be super crazy. But because it's so, you need space and then we're coming up with different ways, we're going to try to put it there.
So should that be added then on, in that column on page 11?
No, because it's going to be finished before that, we don't need to add that.
It is, it is in there somewhere in the, in the park plan, I know, I know I added it.
It's just not in the, in the grid, maybe. Oh, I see, because that's the existing, so we want to add it.
Right.
Got it, okay.
Anything else for Patrick?
So are we supposed to vote on this today?
Yes, with the adjustment for the other two.
Yep, I'll add the other two things back in.
So we'll have. So we'll have a re, um, I vote to approve the park with adding numbers. I'm out here, Patrick. Re-adding the Tressel Bridge and the, sorry. Do you have two numbers for me?
Just have the lady.
I don't. Was it tw- twelve?
Number thirteen was something Mary had brought up.
And then adding the Malaloo, the two point.
Adding number thirteen and the Malaloo back into the original plan.
And then?
And the Malaloo Dam on page fifteen.
The Malaloo Dam on page fifteen.
I'm just double checking if there's anything else.
I don't have our official numbers. It has to approve it. Did Phil second that?
No, we still, we're still waiting for someone to help me out.
No, I don't think we actually had no motion yet, chief.
I just motioned it.
Oh, was there a motion?
Yeah.
And Phil seconded it.
Phil seconded it.
As long as Phil's okay with your changes, then they can.
Second again.
Thanks, buddy.
Yeah, that's right. We wouldn't have had him up here talking if we didn't second that, yeah.
We also have under trails and open space crossed out. And I'm not saying what we should do. I just think it's another thing, as long as we're having this discussion and looking at this thoroughly that we should talk about. So it says trails and open space and crossed out is work with railroad company to acquire the bridge. It's a pretty specific statement. And adjacent property over Lake Malaloo for future trail connection. Is there, do we need to rephrase that versus just get rid of it? Or are we going to make sure we have that somewhere else?
Well, I did, I guess I took it out under the, under the assumption that it wouldn't be just the village going to the railroad and purchasing the property. Because I was, to my understanding, that that wasn't affordable. So that's why I took it out.
Makes perfect sense. That's why I said, do we want to just get rid of it? Or do we want to reword it since we just made that decision? And somewhere in this plan include our intent to enter into serious discussion and work with that project. And I don't know how we would phrase that.
The motion that we previously used would probably be the correct phrasing, the motion that we passed.
Second. First of all, that working group doesn't start till May, after May. So, and we need this plan to be able to apply for a grant. It is a living document, if I remember correctly. So it's not like we can't come back and add something. We don't even know if that working group's going to meet for sure if that grant doesn't come to them. So it doesn't make sense to put it on this plan at this time.
My concern would be is we had the two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and nineteen plan. I remember reading that when I was first running for trustee and/or was first elected. Because I am very interested in natural spaces and parks. And it was already outdated at that time. And I know we're all very busy. And it isn't something people have that much time to do, to just quickly update things. And I think that assuming we do move forward with this and assuming, based on the efforts I've seen so far of the coalition, I think there's going to be some very solid work to at least explore financial options or funding options. That if we don't have this clearly stated in our plan, it doesn't really make a strong statement for the fact that we are seriously wanting to have this conversation.
I don't know how it would hurt us or not hurt us. I feel like we're running faster than the people that are behind us. We're adding something to this that, I mean, I've been forward for everything else. But now I feel like we're adding something that we're not even here for. So I would, I'm totally in for all the other things. I think this is just running too fast.
And years ago, long before many of you were on the board, we had discussions with the railroad people. And we tried to get them to negotiate that piece of property. And the money that they wanted for it was absolutely totally unacceptable. And then the, and we asked them to donate that, you know, to get it off the tax rolls because they have no use for it. And they were not interested in that. And when the county was going to join us with this deal, they offered forty thousand dollars. And the price tag on this is, is well over, what, a hundred and, two hundred thousand?
Two fifty.
Two fifty. So that's probably the reason it came off. Is because unless we start growing money trees around here, I don't see where you ever, in any kind of imagination, can, can even tender the idea that we can afford to negotiate on buying that property.
Well, I do think that it is a different thing, working directly with railroad company than what we agreed to move forward with at our last meeting. So I understand why it's crossed off. I'm just wondering if we want to just make sure that that is clearly stated in our plan that it's one of our possible interests.
It is under the recommendation section.
Right.
It seems like it should carry from the recommendations though down to the specific recommendations. Because we actually voted on it this month. So that's pretty specific.
Hey, we voted on putting it to being part of a working group.
Yes, exactly.
Being in the discussion.
I think, I agree with Kirk that we're getting rid of ourselves.
Running so fast right now that it's like, okay.
Where is a recommendation on that?
It's already there. It's, it's under Lake, on page fifteen. Page fifteen, Lake Malaloo Dam, explore acquisition of railroad bridge and adjacent property, parking, bike, pedestrian, facilities, picnic area, fishing access. So that's something that was already in the plan.
Was that on the previous plan?
Can't be running too fast because it was there since two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, so we have, as a board, we have discussed this before, as Stan said. Talked about having, talking with the railroad. I mean, Melissa, it's, this has been since you've been here, too, right? Several times.
Before, I mean.
That's why we were talking about it before. So that's why it was here. This, what we're talking about now, this new working group and the plans that have been brought forward by the bicycle consortium, I guess, that's different than what this was.
So can we just keep this then? The, the, under the current, just remove the current, the deletion on page fifteen?
It's a completely different.
It, it is, it is and it isn't. I mean, a lot of the wording would, I guess, make the same. We were looking at it completely different before the bicycle consortium came along. So I'm either here nor there on whether that's left in or not.
That comment about working with the railroad is pretty specific. And obviously, we are not in isolation, working with the railroad. And nor would that be a feasible thing to do. I understand that completely.
We weren't before. We had the county working with us.
I do like the wording of explore acquisition because that doesn't commit us to any finances or to agreeing with any other municipalities or any coalitions. But it does clearly state then in two different places in this plan, if I'm reading it correctly, it is a lot to read, that this is on our list of recommendations and/or wishes. But it doesn't commit us to any specific action or specific funding. So I think it gives us that open flexibility that we want. And yet it documents it in this. So if we do include this in some of the grants that we hopefully, we don't know yet, you're right, down the road, will be applying for, that it is clearly written in there that this has been in interest of ours for some time.
So you're asking us to undelete that?
Yeah, I was about to say, I just need one second.
I would agree to remove.
I need to remember the first two, so when I redo this, I can keep the Lake Malaloo Dam. So the first one was?
Page thirteen, whatever she was referencing.
Thirteen, then the Malaloo Park, and now the Malaloo Dam.
Yes.
When you say page thirteen, it's tough for me to.
Yeah.
Oh, number thirteen, okay.
I thought it was number thirteen.
Okay, let's make sure. So.
Bill, did you continue?
It's number thirteen on page thirteen.
Yep.
Let's make sure on all of them, because I agree.
Okay, before I do a motion, do we have anything else?
I think that looks like something I could agree to with those changes.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to re-add Lake Malaloo Dam to the part goal page. Re-add Malaloo Park and number thirteen on page thirteen.
Second again?
I need you, Phil. Thank you. I did. I said Malaloo Dam. I said Malaloo, yeah.
You got it through. Okay. Anything else?
Do we need to say the page of the other ones?
No, they're only identified there once on that, Amy.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think, I mean, all this discussion is great. But the minutes from our last board meeting will reflect that we were agreed to the working group. So this is just more added verbiage for whatever. I mean, if it makes you feel good about it, let's go for it.
So we need a second.
Oh, Phil seconded me three times.
Sorry.
Hey, the one day I really need you when you're here. Appreciate it, buddy.
My hearing, my hearing sucked and I heard that.
This is the most action? Oh, gosh, thank you, Phil.
It was last meeting.
We're making him work for us.
I love it.
Don't get out early last night.
Any further discussion?
Thank you again, Patrick. That was good stuff.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for taking the lead on it. And to you also, Patrick, Kirk, both as well.
Seriously, only three holes? Hatton almost all of it.
You better be careful, careful calling it frisbee golf because frisbee doesn't make them long.
Sorry.
And that's a trademark.
Let's vote for this and move forward.
So any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the adjusted or amended outdoor recreation park plan, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick, very much.
Item thirteen is, board may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one slash, or parent lowercase g for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village of North Hudson who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved with respect to Riverside Drive North Duplex Lift Station property. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. All in favor of going into closed session, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We are now in closed session.